I'd like to call this Municipal Planning Commission to order. The Municipal Planning Commission is conducting this meeting in person and via conference call in accordance with the Municipal Government Act, Section 199. Council chambers is now open for public attendance in person, however, members may still join meetings remotely using our current teleconference process. As per Wheatland County Policy 7.13, members of the public are not permitted to speak unless the commission agrees to hear from them. If the commission agrees to allow the public to speak, the chair will call upon specific individuals at that time. Please note that this call is being recorded and will be uploaded to our website and/or social media. For any individuals using conference call line, we ask that you mute your phone to eliminate background noise. Everyone has a right to be present at Municipal Planning Commission meetings. Any attendees that are considered disruptive to the progression of this meeting may be removed at the discretion of the chair as per the Municipal Government Act, Section 198. We thank you for your cooperation and understanding. Commissioner Aberlink is unable to attend this and she censured regrets. Everybody else appears to be here in person. I believe that GM of Planning, Matthew Biscariot, is on the line if we have any questions of him. He's in a convention somewhere. So we have an agenda in front of us. Are there any additions or deletions?
Chair, I regret, it's Matt from Administration here just calling in remote. There are no additions to the agenda from Administration.
Thank you. Commission's wishes. Somebody move that for me.
Now so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Biggar. Everybody in favor? I think that passes. We have the unapproved minutes of April 12, 2022. Any corrections need to be made? Yes.
Yeah, while I'm happy to be back, it says in the minutes that I was absent and I wasn't a member. I was censured. I wasn't to be here.
Okay, so we can, that can be corrected on the...
Okay. But I'm happy to be back.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, no, well, the Administration will make that correction and will you move, will you move the minutes with those corrections?
I wasn't here, but I believe I can still move it.
Okay, I'll do it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Laurison. All in favor? That is passed. I guess we move on to development permit applications, DP 2022-029.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Suzanne Hayes, Development Officer, and I will be presenting all of the development permit applications this morning. The first one before us is for a variance. If we go to page 15 of the agenda package, we can see the location within the hamlet of Namaika. And on the same page, we have the circulation map. We circulated to adjacent landowners plus one within the hamlet. We didn't receive any responses from neighboring landowners, no concerns from the internal circulation, and we didn't do an agency circulation. So on pages 16 and 17 of the agenda package, we have an RPR and aerial photo showing the location of a shed. A letter of compliance was requested and the review identified there was an existing shed which required a permit and did not meet the setback. It is located one meter from the rear property line and the setback should be 1.22 meters. So the options to gain compliance status would be to remove the shed, to move it into compliance, or to apply for a variance. And this application has been made to apply for a variance to the setback. The neighboring parcel on the rear of the property is an 18-acre egg general parcel. And if we go down to page 18, we have a couple photos of the shed, some things to consider. The proposal does meet the criteria listed in the LUB for variances. There are no structures adjacent to the shed on the neighboring property. And the adjacent property is zone agricultural general, so would have a 10-foot setback from the shared property line if there was ever a building constructed. No concerns were raised from surrounding landowners or internal peer review. So on page 11 of the agenda package, we have the recommendation from staff, which is that Municipal Planning Commission approve the variance for the existing shed, subject to the conditions as noted. And on page 13, we have the standard three options for Municipal Planning Commission, that they can either approve the recommendation, not accept the recommendation, or come up with an alternative recommendation. And that is everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Commission's wishes.
I'll move, sorry, don't... I'll move that Municipal Planning Commission approved DP 2022-029 for a variance for an existing shed, subject to the conditions outlined.
Thank you, Commissioner Lapriese. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That is passed. We move on to DP 2022-056.
And this application is also a variance for a new garage to a body of water. And if we go to the location plan, it is on page 23 of the application package, agenda package. It's approximately 3.5 miles north of Nightingale on Range Road 245. And the circulation map is on the same page. And we circulated to landowners within one mile of the parcel. We didn't receive any comments from adjacent landowners. We did receive a comment from the WID, and what they had said was they do discharge into the lake, however, they have no concerns with flooding or the location of the proposed garage. No comments from adjacent landowners. We did contact McElhaney Engineering for an opinion, and they said the proposal was discussed with a geotechnical engineer. Obviously, he has not been to the project site, but he does agree that a geotechnical investigation would not be warranted. He said they do wonder if a flood study or flood protective works would be appropriate if the area has been prone to flooding in the past. So on page 24, we have the site plan from the applicant, indicating the 15-foot setback to the top of bank of the lake. And from pages 25 to 28, I put several historical aerial photos. So the applicant has applied to construct this garage near to an existing residence and on an established farm shed. The existing structures on there, the oldest one was put there in 1971. They are considered legal nonconforming as they were constructed prior to the current land use by law stipulation, the 100-foot setback from the top of bank of a water body such as a river, creek, or lake. So the new garage is proposed to be located beside the existing residence at a 15-meter setback from the top of bank. There's no history of flooding on the site, and the historical aerial photos that we have on hand dating back to 2000 don't indicate any significant fluctuation in the water level, which is several feet below the top of bank. The bank has not been subject to erosion, as may be the case with a moving body of water such as a creek or river. And again, the Western Irrigation District commented that although they discharge into the lake, they have no concerns with flooding or the location of the garage. On pages 28 and 29, we have a few photos. You can see on page 28, the circles around the stakes where they're hoping to put the garage, some things to consider. The proposal meets the criteria listed in the land use bylaw regarding variances, as it should not have a negative impact on the surrounding area or landowners. Whether or not the current application is approved, the existing buildings will remain on-site as legal nonconforming buildings. The WID utilizes the lake for spillway discharge and have no concerns with the potential flooding or the placement of the garage. There's no history of flooding. No concerns were raised from surrounding landowners or from the internal peer review. And on pages 19 and 20, we have staff's recommendation, which is that MPC approve the variance for a new garage, subject to the conditions as noted. And the three standard options are found on page 21 for MPC. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission's wishes. Yes?
Just looking at it, there's already a bunch of buildings there, and it is kind of a slew. It's got a pretty good bank, so I would be prepared that to move that MPC adopt this, approves the recommendation as proposed.
Thank you, Commissioner Laurison. Discussion.
I have a question. If one in a hundred-year flood happened, would we be liable at all by having approved it?
It is my understanding that because we don't have any knowledge of any previous flooding happening on-site, that I think that we would be okay. I'm not a lawyer, but Sherri, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Do we ever put in a stipulation that we would be held harmless if something happened?
No. Through to MPC, I don't believe that you can do that in a condition. It's because it's what we're trying to enforce with these conditions and things they should adhere to, so it's not a condition that we could include.
Thanks.
Commissioner Clausen. I could see if it was a water course there, but I think if WID wasn't in the area, there wouldn't be as much water there as there is. Yeah, it's driven by that place for my whole life, and it's, the water level never changes. If it wasn't for the canal flowing through it, it wouldn't be nothing.
It'd be dry by now.
In fact, there's some other areas south of there that I just got a phone call last night that they want water again, and WID's put the water in a pipeline, and there's no sloughs anymore.
Very good discussion. We have a vote. I'll call the vote. Everybody in, all in favor? That passes. We will move on to DP 2022-072.
058, I think.
Oh, sorry, my wrong. The Origin Business Park, 058.
Yes, so this application, as mentioned, is in the Origin Business Park. The location plan is on page 35. You can see it there on the north side of Durham Drive. The circulation was completed to landowners within one mile of the application. We didn't receive any responses. We did circulate to Alberta Transportation and Rocky View County. Alberta Transportation said no additional approvals are required for the changes. Please advise the county and provide a copy of this message, which they did. Rocky View had no response. We didn't have any concerns from our internal circulation. The Economic Development Officer mentioned that there is a county sign going in the right-of-way, so as long as it's not in the right-of-way, then it should be fine, no concerns. On pages 36 through 38, we have some, a site plan and some aerial photo or some illustrations of the various signs. So in 2019, this application for the whole truck stop came forward, and they had a sign proposed to go right along Durham Drive, but they've changed the location to be right adjacent to Highway 1 right-of-way, so they had to reapply. And this application was brought forward, as you recall, on the April 12 MPC meeting, but we hadn't circulated to surrounding landowners. We just issued that permit for one month until we could circulate. As they mentioned, they needed to get their, their gas station pylon sign installed. I don't think they have, but in any case, we're bringing this back now that we've circulated. And the application is, has been made to include all the signage for the truck stop, all the initial businesses that will be located in there. We're going to lump into this one permit. So on page 39, yeah, we've got some photos of the gas bar and where the signage is proposed to go there, some things to consider. This is characteristic signage for a commercial highway development. The largest freestanding sign is adjacent to a provincial highway and has obtained the approval of Alberta Transportation. And the signs will be placed in locations which should not impede sightlines or traffic So in conclusion, the recommendation is on pages 31, 30, and 31. And staff are recommending approval for, of the signage, subject to conditions. We've added condition six, which states that the permit has been issued for the multiple types of signs required for the initial businesses proposed to operate within the truck stop. If the businesses cease to operate and replacement signage is required for any new businesses, a separate permit will be required at that time. And also that updating the big pylon sign that identifies all the various tenants and the gas prices, when they update that, they don't need a new permit. So this will be for all the initial businesses located within the truck stop. And MPC has the standard three options, found on page 33, and that is everything. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move that MPC approved DP 2022-058 for multiple signages with the conditions that are listed. Discussion. Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor? That passes.
Just one question.
Yes.
Yeah. We pass this with the multiple signs, another company comes in and they want multiple signs the same. Do they have to come and do the same thing, or can, oh, we got a history here?
So if they came in with an application for multiple signs, yeah, we could come in and bring that forward and bring all the signs at once. Is that your question?
Yeah, but we just approved these ones, so another company comes, they have to go through the same process.
Within the same development?
Yes.
So what I'm recommending is that whatever is going to be in there initially, so the gas station, the cannabis store, the liquor store, the Burger King, KFC, all of those signs are approved, anything that's the first business is in there. But if somebody else comes in, say the KFC ceases to operate there, and then they want new signage, then according to our land use bylaw, they'll have to apply again.
Have to do it all over again.
Yes.
But anything on that pylon sign can be changed at their will?
Yes.
Yeah, so theoretically, okay, thank you.
I'm thinking for the whole area, maybe we can change.
I believe staff are looking into some amendments to the signage portion of the land use bylaw to kind of change it up a little bit and make some signs as more minor applications and bigger, larger signs as major applications, so we don't, it's not such a tedious process.
I'd be in favor too of the West Highway 1 having maybe a special area too, because I'm thinking everybody that comes is going to want a different kind of sign.
Okay, so we can include that.
It would maybe ease the process, reduce the red tape.
Correct.
Good idea. Let pass, so we are now moving on to DP 2022-072.
This application is a variance request for an existing shed. The location plan is on page 45. And it is located approximately four and a half miles northeast of Carsland. And on the same page, you can see the circulation area. We circulated to landowners within one mile. We didn't circulate to any agencies. We didn't have any response from adjacent landowners, and the deputy regional fire chief said he had no concerns from fire as the shed is under 100 square feet, and owners should be aware that in the event of a fire in the shed, the barn would be in greater danger of also catching fire due to the close proximity. On page 46 and 47, we have an RPR, which is their site plan, and an aerial photo. So a letter of compliance was requested. The shed was identified, along with a detached accessory building which didn't have permit. So the detached building is permitted use, but I've included it in this permit process so we can do it all at once. The shed is located one meter from a barn, which is on-site, and the required setback is 1.52 meters. So again, the options are to move the shed into compliance, to remove it altogether, or to request a variance. So this application is to request the variance to the 1.52-meter setback. On pages 47, you can see the shed beside the barn. The proposal meets the criteria listed in the land use bylaw regarding variances, as it should not have a negative impact on surrounding landowners. There were no objections from fire personnel, just a caution regarding the existing barn, and there were no concerns raised from surrounding landowners. So the recommendation from staff, which is on page 40 and 41, is that MPC approve the application for the variance, for an accessory building and the variance for the existing shed, subject to the conditions, and the three standard options found on page 33. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission's wishes.
I'll move that council, or commission approve, the Municipal Planning Commission approved DP 2022-072 for an accessory building and variance for an existing shed, subject to the following conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Biggar. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That passes. Move on to DP 2022-073.
This application is for a variance request. Page 53 of the application package shows the location within the hamlet of Gleason and the circulation area. It was circulated to adjacent landowners plus one. We did not have any responses from adjacent landowners. We didn't circulate to agencies. But the Wheatland County Manager of Operations said for the new access, they will be required to complete an approach application. We don't have a driveway standard, but we'll want to approve the location and whether or not they require a culvert. For the variance request, the likelihood of us developing the alleyway to the rear is low, and this building has resided in the location for some time. My thought would be to grant the variance as long as there is no actual encroachment into the alleyway, which there is not. And you can see on page 54 and 55, an aerial photo kind of showing the area. The Wheatland County Manager of Technical Services says the servicing of this property would have to come from the street. It may be worth noting that the sewer main is fairly shallow on that end of town, so they may want to look at the grade changes involved, as it may very well be uphill to the sewer main from the building location. On pages, page 55, we have a photo of the little building. So the building is 543 square feet, and it was moved on to the property approximately in 2006. The intention was that it would be a small cabin, but it was only ever used as a storage building, and no water and wastewater services had been installed. So now a new owner has purchased the property, and he would like to convert the building to a dwelling and have it properly serviced. And this change will actually bring the use of the parcel more in line with the current land use bylaw, which does not allow an accessory building to be located on a residential parcel without a dwelling on-site. The site plan submitted for the original 2006 permit indicated it would meet the proper setbacks for an accessory building. However, it was not placed on the property exactly where they said it was going to be, so it needs a variance to the side yard of 0.6, it's located 0.6 meters, the steps are from the side yard and 0.45 meters from the rear property line. If it's changed to the status of a dwelling, it would, supposed to have a 6.10 meter setback to the rear property line, so it's a more significant variance that's required if the change of use is approved. This application has been submitted to change the use to an, from an accessory building to a dwelling, single detached, with a variance to the side and rear property line. Proposal meets the criteria for a variance, as it shouldn't have an impact on the surrounding area or landowners. The change of use will bring the residential lot into compliance with the LUB definitions, because it would not have an accessory building without a dwelling. There are no structures adjacent to the dwelling on the rear. No concerns were raised from surrounding landowners or from the internal peer review. And on page 49, we have staff's recommendation, which is to approve this application for an existing accessory building to be utilized as a dwelling with a variance to the side and rear property line, subject to conditions. So we've added a condition that the approach needs to be developed county standards, that they purchase the water meter and go through that, that utility process, and also that they have a building inspection for changing the use from accessory building to a dwelling. And they go through that process. And the standard three options are on page 51 for MPC, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission's wishes.
I'll move that Municipal Planning Commission approved DP 2022-073 for an existing accessory building to be utilized as a dwelling with a variance to the side and rear property line, subject to the following, to the conditions outlined.
Thank you, Commissioner Lapriese. Discussion.
Just trying to, just trying to get my head around this. So is this a separate lot then? This will be a separate residence? Or is it a secondary dwelling to the...
It is a separate lot from the one next door.
That's what I'm just looking at the lines here, so it's a little different.
Yeah, yeah. They're smaller lots.
But they don't have to subdivide because the lot was already there.
That's correct.
So the same person owns both lots?
I believe so, yes.
I like that it's coming into conformance with the land use bylaw, that it's a primary dwelling or whatever. And yeah, I'm concerned about the sewer going uphill. That's a, but I guess that's the homeowner's issue to deal with.
By looks of it, there's no foundation or basement underneath this.
Most looks like it's sitting on pallets.
Cribbing, yeah, definitely cribbing.
Yeah, that's probably what it is. Actually, just one other question. What would happen if the owner decided to sell one of the two lots?
Well, the lots are not connected in any way, so the other lot has its own residence, and whatever he does with that lot is totally separate of whatever he does with this lot.
Seeing no more discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor? That passes. We now move on to subdivision applications. We will start with SD 2019-003.
Stefan Kuhn's presenting on behalf of Administration. Subdivision item 2019-003 proposes to create a 2.14-acre parcel with a 4.29-acre remainder. The lands are located a mile and a half south of the town of Saffmore, one mile west of Highway 817, and on the north side of Township Road 240. In terms of the technical conditions of the site, oh, the lands are designated country residential as well. You'll note there are a number of structures located on-site. Mostly these are within Lot 2, which is developed with a dwelling. Lot 1 doesn't have a dwelling currently, but it has an accessory building and a portion of an accessory building, so those are nonconforming until such time as the dwelling is activated. So those are non-conforming until such time as the dwelling is actually constructed. In terms of the one that's partially located in there, it actually straddles the property line. So the applicant's aware of this. Apparently, it is easy to move, so he will move that prior to endorsement, obviously. So we have included a condition, condition number two, that a site plan be provided, indicating that it is actually within one of the two lots. In terms of access to the site, both lots front onto Township Road two forty to the south. It's currently an existing approach to Lot Two here. So the applicant has two options. Right now, I believe he's leaning towards essentially moving this existing one on Lot Two over a little bit and making it a mutual approach. So that would require a access plan and the associated easements in order to provide access to Lot One. So this is under condition three. We've also provided an option, should he choose to, to create a new lot to Lot One. Just of note with that, it needs to be a minimum of fifty feet or just over fifteen meters from the intersection of Township Road two forty and Range Road two fifty-three. In terms of servicing, Lot Two again is, has a dwelling on it currently, so it has a well and septic system in place. Lot One does not have a dwelling. The applicant has, however, provided the phase-two groundwater supply evaluation that confirms that there is appropriate water for the site and the P S T S assessment that indicates the site is suitable for a septic system. Municipal reserves are outstanding for the site, so for the entire site, but Lot Two is large enough that it's possible that could be subdivided in the future, so we're recommending that that be deferred just for Lot Two at this point. Lot One, given the size and configuration of the parcel, means further subdivision is rather unlikely, so we are recommending that reserves be dedicated through cash and lieu at this time, again, just for Lot One. Now, so there's no concerns with any of those items, but you know, there was a letter in the, in the package concerning stormwater. So there has been a number of, obviously developments take place on this site that were done without having stormwater management effectively and adequately undertaken. So there are some drainage channels, both to the north. Can't really see from this one, but essentially it runs just to the east of the lands there. So there's been concerns from the neighbor about additional water being directed onto his site. So that is something that, you know, obviously we can consider through this. Obviously, those stormwater plans should have been done at the time the development was undertaken, but we can include it as a condition through this. So including a condition for a stormwater management plan in order to establish an appropriate volume, direction of access stormwater, and then recommend any improvements required to effectively convey and store the overland flow. So if that means upgrades to that pond in order to have effective evaporation, construction of swales, that type of thing can be identified through the stormwater plan and then implemented through a development agreement. And that's in condition number six in the package. So that concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval subject to the conditions indicated, and I'm happy to take any questions, should you have. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Kestner.
So the stormwater management plan, is it what it is present day or what it was historically? Because it sounds like you hauled up a bunch of fill and changed drainage courses.
Yeah, through the chair, that's something we'll have to deal with through the plan. Obviously, if it has changed things, it's kind of difficult now to assess exactly what it was ten years ago if we don't have that baseline, but that's something that should be kind of dealt with through the plan. Again, it's difficult to sort of do that once it's already been done, but yes, that's something that should be considered.
I would hate to exasperate it further. Sounds like it's watering the neighbor for sure.
Definitely, yeah. And that's the thing is, it's, this is one mechanism that we can use to actually make them do the stormwater management plan. It's kind of a positive reinforcement to do it. They get their subdivision, but in order to get that, they need to do the stormwater plan. The other option, we do do it through enforcement, but obviously, that's a bit more of a contentious thing and.
I'm always in favor of the development plan. We have more leverage that way. As long as we got, we're going to view this stormwater as back to what it was to historic levels or make the other landowner happy.
Right.
If that's part of the condition, then I'll, then I could support it. And as far as the municipal reserve are, I don't know if that other lot has a potential to be. Do you really think it could be subdivided again?
Through the chair, it's, yeah, I mean, it's up in the air. If you look at the size of Lot One, essentially, you could slice the other one in half and it would be three of those, essentially. That is kind of possible, so.
You'd have to move that house though, then, probably.
I think it could go kind of right between the middle there.
Yeah, do a funny line.
But certainly, you know, if you felt it wasn't possible, you could make the motion to, to apply it to the whole lens.
Thank you. You've, you're finished your report? Sorry?
I am, yes.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner's wishes? Yes, Commissioner Lawson.
Being that the concerns have been addressed, I believe, through the stormwater management that we're adding on to this, I'll make the motion that the MPC approve the subdivision application, subject to the conditions presented.
Thank you. Discussion. I'm going to put my two cents in because I have driven by that piece of property for over fifty years going to Strathmore. And when that was first subdivided, probably forty-five years ago, there was one building site and only one building site. Now, through the course of history, and I don't know who did it, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but a boatload of fill was brought into that place. It was all raised up. There was, there was a wetlands on that piece of property. I know that for a fact, and now, and now it's gone. So, and because the neighbors didn't complain at the time, they really don't have any recourse right now. Like, we are in, like, so if you sort of flaunt the rules and just say, I'm just going to go ahead and do this, you actually get a benefit from that. And that's, so I don't like, I like the op, the idea of the stormwater management. I just, you know, it just doesn't, I don't know if they can address the, the neighbor that is, that has been inconvenienced because now this individual no longer has any wetlands. He's no longer holding any water on his property. He cannot hold any water on his property because he's built it up four feet. So every, so now all that water, and I don't know, it's impossible to tell, but all that water that used to sit on his property is now sitting on the neighbor's property. It was still sitting on the neighbor's property, but it's probably now deeper. I, I just have a real, I really struggle with this. I mean, I, when this place was, when the, this place was sold probably like ten years ago, like when they changed ownership, there was two, there was two homes on here. There was a, there was a house and there was a mobile home. And that mobile home had to be removed because that was what the rules were at the time. So, so we took that six-acre, seven-acre parcel that originally had one house on it, then allowed the second house on it, and then the, when changed ownership, went back to one house. And now we're theoretically going to allow a subdivision with accessory dwellings. We're going to have four houses on this whole. And, and if the land hadn't been contoured and changed and fill brought in and all that kind of stuff, that wouldn't have been an impossibility before because there was no, there was one building site before. So needless to say, I am, I don't know what the solution is. I, I, I am, I thank administration. I think they're tackling this as best as can be, but it just, you know, I guess the whole nine yards is if your neighbor's doing anything, I guess we have to sort of put a complaint in, and, and no one wants to do that. We want to be good neighbors, you know? We, we are, you know, so we go, oh, yeah, they're, they're not going to do anything, you know, drastic. They're just going to do this one thing. And then all of a sudden, it goes, you know? I have no idea how much fill would be required to bring that piece of property up to the height it was brought up, but it is a lot, so. So I, I have to tell the neighbor that because he didn't complain, because he was a good neighbor, he's going to be punished. So his land becomes a little bit less. So that's my, that's my, yes, Commissioner Kestner.
I agree with you, Tom, that he was trying to be a good neighbor at the time, didn't say anything, but enough's enough. He sounds like he, he wants it kind of fixed up. So in my tenure here, instead of having a complaint and going through the complaint process, it's easier for staff to put conditions on through the development process. So if they want to develop it, you do this. If you don't do it, you don't get the permit. So just because we okay this today doesn't mean it's going to happen until they satisfy staff. And the neighbor is just going to have to make his voice heard to staff, but if he really wants that development, he'll do it of his own free will instead of being, going through the complaint process, and we know how long that takes. I find we have, you have more leverage when you have a carrot at the end. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, no, and that, that's very true, that this is a subdivision application, that there's still a development process. It has to be a development permit that has to be brought in, so.
So you can put conditions on like that for a subdivision process, and if they don't like it, they can, of course, they can appeal it, but.
Thank you. Yes.
And I just wanted to note that one of the conditions is a provision of necessary approvals and compensation provided to Alberta Environment and Parks for wetland loss and mitigation. So hopefully, they'll be able to have a look at what has been changed there and maybe there's some compensation owed for that. So it's after the fact, of course, it doesn't resolve the issue, but it brings it to their attention, I guess.
Commissioner Lawson.
Some other files I've seen, various historical data going back forty, fifty years from Alberta Environment on where things were, so they're where.
We might know, yeah.
So, yes, Commissioner Lawrence.
So just a, just a question because I don't know the property and you obviously do, but I know one that's been changed in my division pretty significantly. Do you think that this condition for the stormwater management plan, would that satisfy the concerns there? Because I mean, I don't know, you said a lot of fill, but it's, it's sometimes difficult to put things back the way they were.
Yeah, I, you know, there's no possible way you can put this piece of property back to the way it was. I mean, like, like it's, I mean, he's built, and I mean, it's, I mean, if you just want to use human endeavor and all that kind of stuff, he has done a lot of work on that piece of property, and it's a wonderful piece of property, but we, we lose sight on the fact that, like, just because I can do something on my property, I'm not sure I should be allowed to do it negatively. In fact, I know I shouldn't be allowed to do it if it negatively, in fact, impacts the neighbors, right? And it's, and like I said, this has been done over, this has been done over a lot of years, right? Like, this hasn't just happened. It's been done over a lot of years, so. I, I, it'll be interesting to see when you talk about environment and, and what they say, what they come up with. Like, that could be so onerous that it's, that it's dropped at that, at that point there, right? So it, it might not be corrected, like, there are certain, I mean, I mean, they build in Langdon, and I mean, Langdon is, you know, so it is what it is, I guess. Any more discussion? If not, we have a, we have a vote. I'll call the vote. All in favor? And I'm opposed. So two opposed, it passes. Thank you very much. We will move on to subdivision twenty twenty-two dash zero zero-one.
Good morning, members of MPC. Taylor Felt here with the Planning and Development Services team, presenting subdivision application SD twenty twenty-two dash zero zero-one, which is a proposal to create a five-acre parcel with a hundred and fifty-three acre remainder within northwest fifteen, twenty-seven, twenty, west of the fourth meridian. Referring to page seventy-three of your agenda package, you can locate the proposed parcel four kilometers south of Neehill County on the east side of Highway eight forty-one. The proposed Lot One is developed with a dwelling, an attached garage, or a detached garage, a shop, and a shed. The dwelling is serviced by an existing well and private septic disposal system. At this time, the remainder parcel, Lot Two, will continue to be used for agricultural production, and no development or servicing has been proposed. Both parcels will remain within the agricultural general land use district, which is an appropriate designation as per the land use bylaw. Both parcels are accessed by existing approaches from Highway eight forty-one, and Alberta Transportation has acknowledged the continued use of these approaches. Administration circulated the application to internal and external stakeholders and landowners within a one-mile radius, and no objections were received. In accordance with section six sixty-three of the Municipal Government Act, municipal reserves are not required on the subdivision as the proposed Lot One is considered the first parcel to be subdivided from the quarter. The proposal generally aligns with the provincial and county statutory plans as well as the land use bylaw, and with that, administration is recommending that MPC approve subdivision application SD twenty twenty-two dash zero one, subject to the conditions included on page sixty-eight and sixty-nine of your agenda packages, which I'll bring up on the screen here. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Commissioner's wishes? Yes, Commissioner Bigger.
I'll move that MPC approve subdivision application two zero two-two dash zero zero-one, subject to the following conditions.
Thank you. Discussions. Saying or hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor? That passes. We'll move on to subdivision twenty twenty-two dash zero zero-three.
Taylor Felt here again. This time, I'll be presenting subdivision application twenty twenty-two dash zero zero-three, which is a proposal to create a five-acre parcel with a hundred and fifty-three acre remainder parcel within northeast seven, twenty-six, twenty-four, west of the fourth meridian. Referring to page eighty-two of your agenda package, you can locate the proposed parcel five-point-five kilometers north of Nightingale, on the south side of Township Road two sixty-two and the west side of Range Road two forty-five. The proposed Lot One is undeveloped and has been used in recent years for hay storage. The short-term plans include the construction of a dwelling serviced by on-site private water and wastewater infrastructure. The proposed Lot One is serviced by a new well, and the applicant has provided supplementary reports that indicate water and wastewater servicing can be provided on-site for further residential development. Access is provided by an existing approach via Range Road two forty-five to the east. The remainder parcel, Lot Two, will continue to be used for agricultural production, and no development or servicing has been proposed at this time. Lot Two is accessed by an existing approach via Township Road two sixty-two to the north and two approaches to Range Road two forty-five to the east. All existing approaches to, to both the proposed Lot One and remainder Lot Two will need to be inspected prior to endorsement. Both parcels will remain within the agricultural general land use district, which is an appropriate designation given the land use bylaw. Administration also circulated this to internal and external stakeholders within a one-mile radius, and no objections were received. And in accordance with section six sixty-three of the Municipal Government Act, municipal reserves are not required on this subdivision as it's considered the first parcel to be subdivided from the quarter section. And as this proposal aligns with provincial and municipal statutory plans, administration is recommending MPC's approval of subdivision twenty twenty-two dash zero zero-three, subject to the standard conditions which are included on page seventy-seven and seventy-eight of your agenda packages. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions there.
Thank you, Taylor. Commissioner's wishes?
I just have a question. With that intersection being there, is that enough area left on the site for building? Because I think that that intersection would have kind of setback on it. Just want to make sure they're not. Just want to make sure they're not, they've got enough room to build the house and everything, right?
In conversation, or through the chair, in conversation with the applicant, we have reviewed the setbacks in the land use bylaw, which are twenty-three meters from both that north side property line and the east side property line, and it does leave enough area for their proposed dwelling.
Okay. I'll make the motion that MPC approve subdivision application SD twenty-two-two dash zero-three, subject to the conditions presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawson. Discussion. I'll call the vote. All in favor? That passes. Believe that is everything. There's nothing else that needs to be done. I adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.